Okay, terrific. So folks on Zoom, if you want to participate and ask questions after something's been seconded, it's the same as if you're here, just just unmute yourself and do that. So welcome, everybody. This is the October 23rd meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please join us in the plugging rooms.
The pleasure to be here. The last space where two of the four reached the end, one made in the invisible.
All right. We make a motion to approve the agenda. Any comments or questions? All in favor? We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 9. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Could we please have a report on executive segment?
Sure, immediately before this evening's meeting, the board met an executive session and discussed real estate and legal matters. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Yes.
How do we get lucky enough to have a emitter on this light out here? We have an emitter on it now, you know what? It's it's and on that sense because that was a terrible absence when EMS for
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, yeah. No, that was all part of the green light up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Just general questions you're asking.
Sure, anything that's not on the agenda?
I think on why the Smithfield Gateway Land Expansion was tabled.
That's not us. We're middle Smithfield.
What would I go to find that out?
Last night, meeting at Smith.
Smithfield Township.
They need on the second and fourth Wednesday.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anybody on Zoom have any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, announcements, I don't know if the board has any announcements. I have just two. It's budget season, so we realized that having budget work sessions at eight o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock in the morning on a Friday may not be inclusive, especially when you can't participate by Zoom or anything and they're not recorded. So we do have an evening meeting on October 28th at 6:30. So if you'd like to participate in a budget meeting, you're more than welcome. And also, we are supporting our Person of the Year and their events, so we make those announcements every chance we get. This Friday, there's a fundraiser for the Person of the 2024 Person of the Year Betty Ann Ricky and her cause, which is a cure for breast cancer. So we put out a bunch of flyers over on the side. There's something going on on Friday night, October 24th, that's this Friday over at the Sulu. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody has any.
I just want to, I mean, as treasurer, I did have about the budget meetings, but beyond that, we do have cleanup going on tomorrow and Saturday, both here and in our Wooddale location from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Okay. You mark anything? You would like to announce the, okay. All right, Michelle, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Treasurer is your
No correspondence with Debbie Gates or something.
But I will say, I said, Bushfield Emergency Corps, thanks for for doing some paving in front of our building, which makes it safer and certainly much more attractive for our and can I do one more show, Mr. Pug?
Oh, Mr. Gallo, do you have a flyer? Why, thank you.
Of course. Thank you very much.
60th anniversary, just see. Yeah, tell us all about it. Will I hold it up? Oh, and it's
It's Bushfield Emergency Corps, Tinsby Anniversary and Awards Fair will be on November 15th at Sean Ying. And we are happy to honor Dr. Peter Kavini, who has been our medical director since we began our ALS and were required. And we are also happy that Wade Preston will be performing. And he is known as the Billy Joel standing and he played Billy Joel on Broadway for the entire run of Women Out Band, which was the Billy Joel story. So invite you to visit our website or Facebook page or for the 750 million people who have my phone number, just call.
Thank you. Yeah, I forgot to thank Ed for the cigar. Cigar putting. Okay, now we're up to treasurer's report.
We've got a motion from our general count, 125,8768 cents.
Any comments or questions?
The only question I have is there's a charge here for banners. I don't know what that is.
First page, second page?
First page, towards the bottom. We're getting more Person of the Year banners and flag banners?
I'm trying to find the
The flag store.
Oh, the flag store. Yes, so just like yes, last year when we had the Person of the Year banners up on the utility poles, we're doing the same thing this year.
Right, but where's the ones from last year?
They have, they took them, they have their names on them.
Oh, so these even have names on?
Yes. Yeah, for the, for that. And the American flag banners are there because using the real American flag with a curtain rod wasn't suitable. Any other questions? All in favor?
Motion from our general liquid fuels account, 397,641 dollars and 72 cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Looking from our sewer count, 145,344 dollars and 32 cents.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our fire count, 108,000.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our EMS account, 27,000 sock and dollars.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Solicitor board.
Thank you. The first item under my report is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. The board is aware, we've gone through for a while now, your draft comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment. It was provided back to the county and the township planning commissions for review, probably back in August or September, based upon some revisions you made in response to the county's original review letter. You did get the county's review letter back with some comments, with the majority of them were carryover comments from the prior review. They did include one, not necessarily new, but updated supplement to a prior comment specific to agriculture retail and agriculture general and intensive and specific to the schedule of uses. The county is suggesting or made a comment with respect to potentially allowing for agriculture retail within the R2 and R3 as conditional uses and the I industrial as a permitted by right use due to the fact that agriculture general is also permitted in those districts. And in the text of the ordinance, you characterize agriculture retail as an accessory used to agriculture general. And the county's comment was associated with a potential conflict between the two. And we had also, we had discussed whether or not the original intent of having the agriculture retail used as an accessory to the agriculture general and intensive for the intent of not allowing it to be a use in and of itself. So if that's the case, if that's the intent of the township not to allow for the agriculture retail as a standalone principal use, but only as an accessory used to agriculture general and agriculture intensive, then the question becomes, is the board okay not allowing for agriculture retail in the R2, R3 and industrial as it's currently written? Regardless of it being characterized as an accessory to agriculture general and intensive in the districts that those two principal uses are permitted.
I'm in favor of that and adding the clarifying statement at a later date.
And just so I'm clear, the clarifying statement you're referencing is that some later date will add a clarification in the text of the zoning ordinance, clarifying that this is the intent of the Board of Supervisors is not to allow for agriculture retail in every district that agriculture general is but only as an accessory used to that principal use in the districts where agriculture retail is permitted in the schedule of uses.
You say that again.
You are so, yeah, this is how it's on here.
See, that time time is fast. But Ed had a question, so you'll have a chance to say it again.
Is there any conflict with the right to farm law versus this, these warrants?
Yeah, the agriculture retail we're talking about is an accessory use. The agriculture general is permitted in every zoning district.
But I mean, does the right to farm law have any conflict with either of those designations?
No, because like I said, agriculture general is permitted in every zoning district, even the R2, R3 as a conditional use, but it's still permitted. We're talking about the agriculture retail piece.
Indirectly, the right to farm law too, the farm law was also, I think, retail.
For purposes of zoning, no, because agriculture retail is retail, it's retail. Agriculture, like I said, agriculture, I want to be very clear, agricultural general, that use is permitted in every district in the township by right, except for R2 and R3 where it's permitted as a conditional use.
All right, any other questions? For the solicitor? Okay.
So at this point, unless there's any other comments or questions, the board can either decide to make the revisions referenced in the county's review letter or if you're comfortable with how it's currently written with the understanding that we'll clarify it at a later date, you can move forward considering authorizing it to be advertised for a public hearing pursuant to the uncertainty.
I'm in favor of authorizing for authorizing the solicitor that advertised for a public hearing. Are you in agreement?
I'm moving that.
We'll make a motion. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under my report is Goldust Capital Escrow Wins West Storage Facility. This project was before my plan. But it's my understanding, after looking at at least the improvement agreement associated with the plan, that they posted a cash escrow with the township to secure the improvements. It's my understanding that they are now, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that they are now asking to maintain the financial security associated with their land development plan with a letter of credit and they want to substitute a letter of credit for the cash that was already deposited for town. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that the board's okay and agreeable to it because that'll the development, the improvements agreement references a cash escrow, so we'll have to do a short supplement to the development agreement indicating that cash is getting replaced with a letter of credit.
That's fine. You wanted a form of a motion or?
Yeah, just, it'll come back before you when the supplement to the development agreement is ready.
I'll make the motion to accept the letter of credit in lieu of cash.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Yeah, and the last item under my agenda is 4998 Milk Road. It's my understanding that the property owner developer is proposing some exterior renovations and upgrades to the gas station convenience store in the property. You have a correspondence from Sean McGlynn from SFM Consulting indicating that the renovations include a small addition at the rear of the building.
I'll bet that's why the gentleman with the Onvo vest is here.
Oh, well, maybe I'll, maybe I'll hand it over to you.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the applicant may be requesting a waiver of land development. Is that what you're here for this evening?
Yes.
Yeah, well, why don't you?
Very minor, it's a, a big remodel project. We'd like to make the facility look better and more modern. If you've ever driven behind the building, there's sort of a driveway behind it and the building is cannoli ber and hangs over on the backside of the second story.
Picture in your packet. And excuse me, sir, can we just get to the main for the record?
Fired.
Jeff fired?
Yes, I signed in and Dan Naylor is also on Zoom. Dan is our vice president of real estate. And I am the chief operating officer. Dan couldn't be here, so I, I came out. But anyways, the building's cannoli ber over on the backside, which creates an unsafe situation. It's been driven into before by smaller box trucks and that type of thing. So all we're intending to do is bring those walls down to the ground, build a foundation. It's basically going to be a very small story. We're not changing the, the overall use of the facility. It'll still be a convenience store field. And the field will be much safer when we're through with it.
Interior, interior or exterior.
On that addition.
On the addition.
It'll just be closed. There is an exterior door a few feet over from there to the northeast maybe. But yeah, we have proper fire exits and those type of things for safety.
What if there is something in the board's packet? It looks like it's a it's called Onvo Exterior Refresh Project Location Map. Looks like it's dated. Looks like the latest revision date is September 30th, 2025.
Yeah, you must be looking.
Oh, I get. But if the board were willing to entertain a waiver of land development, I don't know if they are, does this packet show the square footage that you're proposing, like the total square footage that you're proposing on the, on the backside? Actually, can you?
Yeah, I can point it out, sure.
Is it this? Is this the?
Yes.
It's this, right?
Little piece right there, yeah. And that is
Where there's already a cannoli ber.
Right, right. There is a second story about that right now that hangs over the back of the building for some reason.
Yeah, it's almost like So you're simply, what you're bringing is you're going straight to that's it.
There's, there's really nothing material from an engineering standpoint. I mean, the building coverage, I think, remains the same because the roof is essentially unchanged. So you know, purvis and purvis area, ability wise, so it'd really be nothing for us to review on this.
I was going to ask how does traffic pass back there, but I can see already two holes there.
Yeah, we've tried to protect that as best we can. People still running this stuff.
Sure.
It's lit and we'll keep it lit, but this'll we'll put some curving in to distract traffic away from the building.
I'd be in favor waving the land development plan.
So if the board, the board were willing to entertain a motion to grant the requested waiver of land development, there are certain general conditions that I always suggest include as conditions to the waiver. One of them is the applicant signing professional services agreement to the extent that any of the township's professional services need to review whatever is being submitted. Compliance with any and all, put co-zoning in other ordinances as well as ensuring that the improvements are consistent with and limited to the plans submitted to the township already, limited to that overhang area.
Just for, just for clarification, what is the square footage of this addition? I know, I wanted it for the record.
I didn't calculate it, I'm sorry.
It was a little, I thought it was 120 square feet.
102.
Dyslexic. Oh, I just wanted, I wanted to make clear what we're wa, what we're waving.
Yeah, it's a nice shape.
Probably pretty close. It's probably just north of 100s for
Yeah.
It's 25 feet, three, three and a half feet on the one side, about six feet on the other, as far as width goes.
So.
I'll just stay there for the record.
No, 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 we have it. It's good. I just wanted people to understand that waving a land development plan.
I would just say, I mean, I, I think it sounds as if we're all, you know, in favor of this, but I think we should get a formal request from the developer to act upon rather than just, you know, discussion.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it got before you. Did Sean receive a formal request?
Sounds like based on this email, and it's all just emails that I have. It's just from October 18th from Sean to the board. And it was zoning, the zoning department, that he had received an application for an exterior renovation upgrades. So he's just, Sean's looking for guidance as far as land development, yes or no?
Okay. So what that would require is simply a correspondence, something in writing from you or the applicant requesting the board to consider a waiver of land development subject to the proposed improvements limited to what's shown on the plan within that overhang. And then that'll get on the agenda for the board to consider at a, maybe their next meeting, depending on how quickly you can get it in.
Oh, really?
True.
Dan, did you want to add anything to that? I'm not sure where it's at.
Yes, I appreciate. This is Dan Naylor. So I, I do believe Sean had provided a recommendation on this as well. Is, is that included with what you have?
No, no, he's just, it's not a recommendation. He's just letting us know, you know, that we've had these discussions and you know, this is what you're proposing, but I, I think just that, you know, for the township's purposes, I think it should be formalized before we act upon it. That's my opinion.
So, and, and my only request would be if we can make this request formal as of right now through a verbal request and have that on the record, I'd like to be able to do that as we're hoping to be able to begin this work within the next week and a half to two weeks.
I'm in favor of doing that with a follow-up, you know, pending a follow-up letter.
Well, then, I mean, we could just, I mean, we can certainly say it's a, but we wouldn't issue a permit until we get that letter.
Yeah, we've marked with the motion. Yeah, so you want to repeat your motion, Mark?
I'm in favor of waving the land development plan and based on what we just discussed, make sure we have a letter of pardon for any permits being issued. I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that's all the agendas under my report. I might have some comments and guidance on future agendas at this time. That's the only ones that are specifically related to it, unless the board has anything further from me at this time.
Nope. Thank you. Okay, Ben.
Yes, so our office, we prepared bid specs to go out for the Big Bridge Drive Sewer Relocation project. So this is associated with the, the bridge that is currently closed. The township owns sewer that is attached to that bridge and it is something we've been working with the permitting process to get relocated to the east of that bridge. The easement from CCP South that is required for this, we expect to be, I guess, acted on here in the next couple of days and should be executed here very shortly. And so at this point, the good specs have been sent to Pat for his review. Comments were made that we have addressed. I don't think there's any more comments you anticipate at this time. Pat, is that correct?
Yeah, no, I think my comments were specific to the the bid advertisement.
Okay. So at this time, the motion would be to authorize us to coordinate with Michelle on getting the advertisement for bid scheduled for the Pocono Record and to open up the bid on, and bid. The intention being to have bids received on the day of your, I believe it's December 4th. It's the first meeting in December for the Board of Supervisors. So we have the bid opening that evening.
So.
So.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
The only, the only thing I will add, just as an FYI to that, is remember, we are still waiting for CCP South to sign that easement.
Yeah.
It's my understanding it's on our agenda for their meeting this
The 25th.
Correct.
Yeah.
Absent anything unforeseen, we should have that in that short.
The second item under my report is regarding the Mount Nevo Apartments Phase 2 Sewage Planning Exemption Mailer. So with the additional 30 apartment units that are being proposed as and development, they are required to submit a sewage planning exemption mailer to DEP. They are within your sewer service area. We do have capacity in both the collection system and the treatment system for those 30 additional units. This is a document that would need to be signed off on by township staff member. It's submitted to DEP along with the documentation that they've already provided to me. I have submitted to Joan the draft language for the letter from the township to DEP confirming that we have capacity. So the motion would be to authorize signing off on that exemption mailer.
So. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
That's all I have.
Okay, old business. This is what you were just talking about, Pat, letters A and B. We're all B.
Yeah, there's nothing new to report on those. We're still waiting for a little bit more specific design and plan for the streetlight. The streetlights proposed by CCP South and the other easement, sanitary sewer easement associated with the CCP at Tom X and Village Drive. They have, the council has agreed to the updated revised language, the text of the easement. We're just now waiting to get the final exhibit and that will be ready to be afforded as well.
Yeah, we're, we're preparing that, that exhibit at this time. So I'm hoping there's chances. Yeah, we're, we're preparing that that exhibit at this time, so hoping there's chances tomorrow, if not early next week. Should have that available, but send the pad, it was a season south for.
Um, and then there's under old business, uh, tractor supply, uh, they had. We received a letter from the engineer on October seven, um, recommending that we release the remainder of their security. I understand there were some questions, so we tabled it at this time. Uh, it appears that we're all resolved, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, so I looked at the, again, this is one that predates me, but I looked at the improvements agreement, I looked at the approval. Uh, resolution and the issue was the off-site sidewalk extension and uh, the resolution indicated. The payment of uh, fee of open space for the extension. Uh, the sidewalk and I I believe they made that payment, that fee of the up payment.
Correct.
So then it appears that this is ripe for a. Motion to release the twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the remaining security. Second, uh, any comments or questions?
I will say that um, the township will be contracting. Have the sidewalk done that connects tractor supply to Cellerville. With the money that was paid by a developer.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? Okay. And now we're up to the board has in your packets, uh, Lakeside Investment Court, better known as Richard's Tree Farm. Uh, they took part in the Revitalize uh, two oh nine program and they have finished their project. Just give me a second, I will. Share a screen of. Here we go, yeah, that came out, very nice. Now, if I can just figure out how it would be.
I'll make a motion to make the reimbursement.
All second, any comments or questions?
Or just maybe suggest, just make that subject to them executing any documents they haven't yet that are required associated with it.
Yeah, I believe they returned, they turned in uh, all their receipts and everything.
You want blood samples too, right?
Not me. So there's been a motion and a second, uh, comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? So. Congratulations on another great project. That brings us to new business.
Make a motion that we enter into a winter service agreement with.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor, yes.
I feel like I'm the guy complicating, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that this is a total of a ten-year project this time, or a ten-year agreement this time. Your first term is five years and then it automatically renews for another five.
Correct.
Well, another annually for five. Uh, which is, I think, longer than your current one. And uh, I would also just make sure, if I'm sure someone did, but on that exhibit. A, just to ensure that it's an accurate listing of the three roads.
Yep.
And the distance that uh, it's being maintained.
Correct, and we also had Pendup. Uh, make. Repairs uh, to these roads before we entered into this agreement and they assured us that they will be paving. Uh, Tom X Road next year. And also further paving on uh, Lower Lake.
And and they sure intend that that this year.
They did, they, that where they uh, milled it out, that's, that's their repair on Tom X. To to. Sort of smooth it out, it'll be where the rumble.
It is a little better coming off of Sellersville, the wall combat.
Right, but they're not going to do any more this year. But like I said, they are going to pay it next year. Yeah, we have in writing, so I mean, that's why we held it, we had this agreement for. What? February, so.
Is, is that all the Pendup firms?
No, no. It's only. It's, it's Tom X, it's um. Lower Lake. It's uh.
Four oh two?
It's Hollow.
It's all road, yeah.
No, Hollow Road, yeah, it's all the same roads that we're doing now that are plowed or whatever. Yeah, that's, but yeah, that's Pendup passing you.
That's why I asked the question.
Right.
And does, does this uh, written agreement have a escalation cost each year?
It's a, it's a, like I said, first term is five years and then after that, it's automatically reused for one year for net max five years, so total. Total of ten, each and annually will increase by two percent.
Okay. That's what you're gonna get, I mean. Yeah.
I was getting, I'm slow.
Okay. I mean, there's been talk and and I mean, there's always come back and change it, there's been talk at P SATS. Um, that I believe P SATS was trying to push like forty-five hundred dollars a mile. Uh, compared to the fifteen hundred that we get or fifteen seventy-five we get now. And that Pendup has countered with like twenty-six hundred. So it is at least some increase.
Correct.
Um, forthcoming, so. But when that happens, I don't know, but I I heard that as recently as um. February this year.
Well. And I'm not up to date on those conversations, but.
You should come with me.
This is a, this is a ten-year.
Understood, understood. But, but that amount has generally been the same, I think we get fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars now, I mean, it's not.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you went to this agreement ten years and if, if he sat somehow gets Pendup to agree to. A higher number that's reflected in this agreement.
They know that, everybody has the same.
I know, I've seen it.
Right, everybody has the same thing, so they're just fighting to have it amended.
Okay.
It won't be a, a revision or or cancellation of the contract, but they'll amend the contract.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All in favor? And the next part?
Yeah, this is the resolution that goes along with the interment agreement, so I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash one.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All right. Uh, and next up, we have a request from the Monroe County Deddlings Association, every year they put a banner over two oh nine. Uh, announcing their parade, their parade is November second this year. Um, and they are requesting that the banner be weighed.
I'll make the motion.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor? And then for the next point of order, um, it's always sad when we have to do this. Um, but we with regret must accept the letter of resignation from Economic Development Committee Member. Uh, Joe Memley, so just to share. Nine years of dedicated service. For it, uh, he joined the committee in its earliest days. Uh, and due to, it was due to his tireless efforts and outreach and advocacy that we now have L V H N here. I remember the early days when he made presentations um, with uh, Anthony from Santa Fe. To the health networks in the area to try and bring urgent care. Uh, and hospital services closer to us, so now we have something in Middle Smithfield, so. Um, his, he was the downtown manager for uh, the borough, he had that experience that he brought with him. So, and and just so much more, so we'll include this letter uh, with the minutes just to um. Give him a shout out for, for that. You know, all the work he did with the Boy Scout camps. Anyway, I'll make a motion to accept, to regretfully accept this letter of resignation.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? I'm thankful for my job for being very close. Any public comment? On anything that just happened, anyone, Zoom, you were in the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Questions, all in favor?